Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Last one for the month of February. It's hard to believe we're already looking at March here in a few days. But thank you for coming. And at this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Sharp, if he would, to invite Reverend, in this capacity, S.D., to offer the invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Let us take a moment for silence to remember those who are suffering so deeply tonight because of the latest school shooting. Our Father in Heaven, we pray for these folks, these families that are suffering so terribly bad tonight. We ask that, Lord, you comfort them, give them peace, give them direction, and be with them through this. Give them courage to face tomorrow, be with their survivors, and watch over them and protect them. Lord, we thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for our community, for our state, for protecting us. Thank you for our military, our law enforcement, our first responders, fire EMS, all these people willing to risk their lives to help others. And we praise you, Father, for our leaders. We need good leaders. We look to our leaders. And we praise you for this board and pray for their wisdom. You said if anybody needs wisdom, to just ask you, and you'd share yours with us. We need that wisdom in this kind of world that we face today. You've said in your word that the God of this world has blinded the minds of the unsaved. We're dealing with people with blinded minds. We pray for wisdom. Guide us and direct us is our prayer. Bless the board, each one. Give them wisdom to make these decisions according to your will, and then it will be exactly right. Guide us and direct us, and thank you for today and all your blessings, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. I have several.
Okay. All new business? No?
No, a little bit of this and that. The first item is new business. Late last week, we received a letter from the Department of Transportation referencing the relocation of the graves at Shallowell Church. Staff would like to just have a discussion on that with the board on our new business. We also received a request from Downtown Sanford, Inc. that's time-sensitive for a request for funding at the tobacco warehouse. Need to add to the buggy factory item another lease that came in this morning with one digital benefits to be approved. So we'll be talking about two tenants there instead of the one. So we can just add that to that new business item. And then we need to have a closed session to discuss the acquisition of real property.
All right, any other items?
Yes, Madam Chair. At some point in time, I'd like to bring up House Bill 551. Maybe most everybody here should have gotten an email some time ago from Justin Rice on behalf of House Bill 551, and I would just like to put it on the agenda for discussion at some point, see if we show support for that. Attorney Parrish is also advising you that you may be looking into this a little bit more, getting even more information regarding it. It's basically regarding victims' rights.
Okay. And that's in our additional items packet that's in front of you tonight. It looks like this, General Assembly Session at the top, and we'll put that as G, just for your information tonight. Is that okay? All right. All right. And then, any other additional items? I need to add one for new business, and that'll be Item H. And basically, just citizen safety. Is the topic? And I'll just share some information I've gotten in the last few days and have some discussion and guidance. Okay? Is there a motion?
I don't agree.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. And the approval of the consent agenda?
We approve it.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, let's move right into our public hearings. Thank you, Ms. Davidson. And Mr. Segret. The first will be a public hearing on the proposed economic development project, Project Wolf Pack. And we have Ms. Parrish and Mr. Joyce. So I guess I'll call Mr. Joyce to kick things off for us before we open the hearing. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of board. The first item for public hearing is Project Wolf Pack. This is the potential expansion of an existing industry here in Lee County. This company is considering facilities in Sanford, and the company has two other U.S. locations with similar capabilities. If Sanford is chosen for the project, it will add state-of-the-art machinery, it will increase production efficiency, and help the company maintain a competitive edge for the products that they manufacture. And it will also allow the company to meet increased customer demand for their product globally and maintain their existing workforce here in Lee County. The total investment in machinery over three years is $36 million, and the investment in real property, which will be made mainly in the form of building renovation to accommodate this new equipment, is $5 million, and that will be made over five years. The project will add 18 jobs at an average annual wage of approximately $27,300. If our location is chosen, the expansion will begin in the third quarter of 2018 and take place over three years with completion in 2020. This company does pay a portion of employee health coverage. This board has asked before for me to report that to you. They do pay a portion of employee health coverage as well as additional benefits, which are competitive in the marketplace. The company has had no major safety or environmental citations. This investment in Sanford will add to the local facility, certainly make it more likely that we will receive future investment here. There is internal competition for this project. As I mentioned, there are two other locations. A decision will be made by early March. The company has discussed an incentive from the state that would be a building renovation incentive. We have not been asked to provide a match, however, if we are, that would be included in the amount of the incentive that we're talking about tonight. There is no community college training grant proposed, and the local incentive, which we have discussed, is a five-year incentive in the form of a tax grant. It would be 75% for the first three years and 75% for the last two years. This is a recommendation from the Saga Economic Development Committee. The total incentive over five years would be $715,977. The total tax payment, and again, that's very difficult for us to estimate as the incentive is, because it is based on tax value, and we don't know exactly how these pieces of equipment and the building renovations will show up on the added value. But the incentive, of course, is paid only on the added value. So the total tax payment, we estimate at $949,548. And if there are any questions, be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
Is this the company's first time? Incentive?
This is not the company's first time for incentives.
Do you know any prior incentives?
This company has received, their last incentive was, would have been three years ago. It was an incentive that was made by the city and not by the county.
Do you know any that had over the years?
I would, I don't know, John, do you remember? I'm, thank you.
Four or five, I think would be the guess at this point.
How many people does this company employ?
This company currently employs about 400 people here in Sanford.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this economic development project, Project Wolf Pack. Is there anybody that would like to speak for the project? Anyone to speak against the project? Okay, I'll close the public hearing for Project Wolf Pack. Okay, moving on to the next public hearing is the proposed economic development project, Project Temperature.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Project Temperature is the potential new location of a foreign company. They are considering the construction of a facility in Lee County. This company has one other U.S. location with similar capabilities. If our location is chosen, the project would begin with a small office and a warehouse for the sale and service of their product, which is now made overseas. In year four of this project, the company would construct a manufacturing facility to make their product here in the U.S. The new factory would allow the company to expand its customer base and serve its current customers in the eastern U.S. The total investment in real property and machinery over the seven years of the project would be $22.5 million. This project would add 109 jobs at an average annual wage of approximately $34,950. Five of these jobs would be experienced foreign managers for the company, which would move over here to begin the facility. If Sanford is chosen as their location, construction of the factory would not begin until 2021, but again, they would move a small contingent here to begin the sales and service operation. The company does pay a portion of employee health coverage as well as additional benefits. This company has had no major safety or environmental citations in the U.S. The investment in Sanford will certainly add to our tax base and payroll to our local economy. There is competition for this project. We expect a decision to be made the first or second week in March. State assistance will be requested, but no local match beyond our incentive proposal is required. There will be a community college training grant proposed for this project. The local incentive will be requested from both the city and the county. This is in city and county. So our incentive package that we put together is a seven-year incentive, which is a little out of the norm for us. We generally go with a five-year incentive, but because the large investment in this project is in year three to entice this company to come here, we stretched out that incentive for an additional couple of years. It is a 50% tax grant based on their added tax value. So we project the total incentive to be $306,639, and that is against what we estimate to be a total tax payment of $613,278. And if there are any questions, be glad to answer that.
Number of employees again?
One oh nine, and five of those would be brought in from overseas.
If I may as well, there's, in your additional materials, the agenda abstract reflected a previous number that's a moving target that Bob and I have to work with on the amount of incentive. So it's 306,639, but that was what was advertised in the newspaper, so.
Yeah, we did, Woody and I have been communicating a lot, and we did miscommunicate on that one piece, but the correct number was advertised in the paper.
You're saying they're getting a state grant too, right? A incentive package?
Yes.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Joyce. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for Project Temperature. Anyone to speak in favor of the project? Anyone to speak against? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. And one more. Public hearing on the proposed economic development project with Project Eagle. And this is a good thing, I'm not complaining.
I don't mind getting up and down when I have three projects.
Yeah, when we have companies wanting to do business in Lee County.
Nice to bring three projects at one time.
Yes.
Project Eagle.
Before you begin, this is also an additional material.
Right.
What was advertised is now reflected on the agenda here.
Okay, thank you.
This is also the expansion of an existing industry. They are considering an additional facility here in Sanford. The company has five other locations in proximity to us that would have similar capabilities. So we are certainly aware that there is competition for this project. If our location is chosen, the project would add logistics space and production machinery, equipment. It would increase production efficiency and help the company to maintain a competitive edge for the manufacturer of their product, which is sold worldwide. It will also allow the company to meet increased customer demand and maintain their existing workforce here. The total investment in machinery over three years is $24.5 million, and the investment in real property, which is mainly in the form of renovation of a building to accommodate this new equipment, is $5 million over five years. This project will add 40 jobs at an average annual wage of about $41,000. If we are chosen, the expansion would begin second quarter of this year, so it would be very quick, and take place over a three-year period with completion in 2020. The company does pay a portion of employee health coverage as well as additional benefits. No major safety or environmental concerns. This would certainly add value to our local facility and makes it more likely that we get new projects in the future. There is, as I mentioned, internal competition for the project. State assistance in the form of building renovation grants will be requested, and if there is a local match, it would come out of this portion of the incentive. There has currently been no community college training grant proposed, but that process has not worked completely through yet. So the local incentive that we are requesting would be a five-year incentive. This project, on our internal score sheet that we use, scored at a tier two. So the recommendation from the project, the Saga Economic Development Committee, is a tax-based grant of 80%, 70%, 60%, 50%, 50% over five years. That total would be $396,228 against the total tax payment. Again, these are estimates, 629,983. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for Project Eagle. Anyone to speak in favor of Project Eagle? Against? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. All right. Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Appreciate it. Okay, and now, public comments?
Madam Chair, before you move to that, there were a couple of questions raised on the very first project that we weren't certain on the, meant the time to answer, and I think we ought to get that information included, part of the record.
Okay.
I think Commissioner Connect had the first set of questions, and the record ought to reflect that.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, public comments. We have one, Mr. Jeff Reed. And if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am.
And three minutes and the attorney will key time.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for coming.
My name is Jeff Reed, and my address is 3417 Winterwind Circle here in Sanford. I've just got a brief letter that I'd like to read to you. Commissioners, I thank you for your time. I wanted to bring attention to you as one of your own, as over the past few days, been on social media, in my mind, since the day elected, campaigning for the position of sheriff. In his current position, he controls a portion of the purse strings that have budgetary authority over that and all county departments. As of today, he continues to make posts, videos, using those tactics, and giving information that some people would consider confidential, especially about school security and their staff. He seeks to use the recent event of a school shooting to bolster a run for sheriff. In my mind, that's shameful. A few people view his post and agree, mostly former employees of the county who were terminated and have sour grapes. I wanted to bring this to the board's attention, that perhaps your own board member should concentrate on her current elected position and not spend the day demeaning our elected sheriff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on into old business. Presentation from S3 Connect, Ms. Kennedy. Thank you, ma'am. How are you?
Good evening. Glad to be here tonight to talk to you about what we have done over the past year with S3 Housing Connect. We have several presenters tonight to talk to you. Our first one is Jeffrey Rollings with Johnston Lee Hornet Community Action. He'll be followed up by Terry Alavod with the North Carolina Coalition to End Homelessness. Then Wayne Eric Chu. He is a committee representative and a local interested citizen. The next presenter will be Rachel Picard, who's been our intern for this project, and then I'll come back up and ask for questions and answers. We hope to do this annually with you as long as S3 Housing Connect is in place.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Rollings with Johnston Lee Hornet Community Action, and I am the chairperson for S3 Housing Connect. I'd like to start off with how S3 Housing Connect came into being. The Simmons Building, the building located at 710 Wall Street. The city approached me with some information regarding the possibility that the building would be closed, and asked if we would be able to get the people out of that building and get them somewhere else so that they would not become homeless leaving the building. So I went to the building, and the owner was across the street. I went inside with one of the tenants, and I walked into the building, looked around a little bit, and they took me upstairs, and I looked down the hall in the building. And it was right after it had snowed last year, and I could still see snow coming inside the building at the very end. I was looking down a long hall, maybe a good hundred feet long. If you're familiar with the building, it runs the full length of the building. Well, the building hallway was dark, and I was looking down there, standing with a gentleman, and the floor glistened. So I couldn't really tell at the very beginning, but as I got further down, I noticed that the floor was wet, and there was electric cords on the floor going, because one side of the building had no power, the other side did. So they were sharing power with extension cords, but the floor was wet, and we were proceeding to try and walk down the hall. I was extremely afraid of being electrocuted going down the hall, but we looked at the building, and the conditions were completely deplorable and not fit for human people to live in. So we called a meeting, and engaged again with the city to let them know that we would be able to get them out of the building and get them into emergency housing. So the city allotted some money. I had a meeting with all the residents, the residents who lived there who had leases, and those who were what we call nighttime residents, midnight residents, who would come in because the building was porous. It was easy to get into the building, and they would come in at night for whatever purpose they chose to come in. But we wanted to include them as well, so we wanted to get everybody into housing. When the persons came to the meeting, I did what I would normally do, which is look at their challenges are, what their strengths are, and I was very surprised to find that the majority of people in that building worked or received disability, and that they had just simply been in the building because they had gotten used to the conditions as they began to go downhill. Those gentlemen there who had been in that building for 26 years, who kept apologizing to me about the condition of the building. So we were able to get the people, at the beginning, we got them into the hotels and were ready to get them out temporarily, but we were able to, out of those 22 housed, 17 of them, one we housed on the very first day. All they really needed was a chance to be able to get, they couldn't afford a rent and afford a deposit, so we were able to, with what the city provided, get them into housing. And the vast majority of them are still in the housing that they were able to get. Now, because of this, we had a meeting where we came together with about 100 people. There were city officials, there were county officials there, there were faith-based communities there, nonprofits there, civic organizations were there, and the shelters were there as well. And we began to form the task force, and as it became, as it came into shape, we elected officials, we started off with six committees, which we still have in place now. Committees are the Low Barrier Shelter, the Community Engagement Committee, Service Provision Committee, Data Metrics, and the Resource Development Committee, and a housing committee as well. What we have come to find out is that we are, we have some very, very strong strength in the fact that we have five shelters here. That is a good way to get people into some temporary housing, but what we're lacking, we're finding out that we are lacking in what to do when we get them there. And the entire country is moving to a housing-first model. Being in that model, what we're looking at is first, let's get them someplace. We had an incident that kind of spurred us when we came to you guys for assistance with the hotel fund, where we had to, a gentleman presented as homeless, and we had nothing that we could present him in this county. He didn't fit into what we had going here, the shelter would not take him, and I had to transport him to Wake County. We were prepared to transport him to Virginia to assist him, but at the last minute, they couldn't do it, and Wake County took him. So what we're aiming to do in this, in our committee, is close the gaps in what we have here. We've got a very, very vibrant system going, but there are some places where we can see some improvement. So that is what we're aiming to do. We've made some great strides so far, and we are looking to do much more in the community as well. It's something to be very, very proud of, the city and the county, and those who participated. It's something to be very proud of what we've accomplished so far. Now, presenting coming next will be Terry Alavod, who will be coming from North Carolina Coalition in Homelessness, and he came in to assist us and kind of guide us as to what we were needing to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Appreciate it.
So there are a number of folks from the, what's called the S3 Housing Connect group that are here tonight, so I'd like to ask if they would stand, and so you can see a couple of the folks that have been working very hard on the county's behalf. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So I have a pleasure of coming down to Lee County and to Sanford and getting to know these fine folks and the rest of the S3 Housing, which S3 stands for Shelter Services Stability and Housing Connect, just like it says. And in my last 30 years, I've worked with the homeless, I've started organizations that serve the homeless population, built housing for them, and also worked with communities such as Sanford and Lee County to help them develop a community-wide response. And it is my joy to work with a community that has said, especially after the Simmons Building experience, we're not okay with homelessness in our community. We want to figure out if there's a community response we can put together that will respond to that, and that is happening now. I want to read to you briefly their mission statement. Housing Connect seeks to bring together the needed resources in Sanford and Lee County to create a coordinated and comprehensive approach to ensure that homelessness is prevented whenever possible, or is otherwise a rare, brief, and non-recurring experience. This sense of a coordinated, comprehensive response is a shift, really, because a lot of times, in places like Sanford and across our state and across our country, there are individual organizational responses, a lot of people doing good work, but they're not coordinated with the other programs across the town. And so a lot of the work is to bring together a coordinated response. So what we're looking at is a whole system. How is Lee County doing at ending their homelessness, not how is one individual group doing? And that takes some change in thinking, how we're going to coordinate that to make that happen. So they've been taking some steps to build this, and that incorporates some models that are important to do in order to be successful. One Jeffrey mentioned, Housing One Jeffrey mentioned, Housing First, which seeks to get people into housing as quickly as possible and remove those barriers. So you're not, if someone has been drinking, that doesn't mean that they get evicted from their housing. Or if someone has had a bad credit or a bad rental history, you work with, you work with the landlord to try to help them get another shot because no matter what's happened to people, no one deserves to be homeless because of that. And that's a value statement. And it's a value statement that the S3 Housing Connect has been making and it's a value statement of Housing First. The Service Provision Committee's been working on a coordinated entry process so that everyone is using the same intake. And then determining through a, through a scoring mechanism, what kind of services people actually need. Homelessness is not a one-size-fits-all. People come in with different needs. Some people just need shelter for a few days and they will self-resolve. Well, you don't try to provide them a lot of services. You try to provide a lot of services to people that indicate that they need that help. There's Low Barrier Shelter, trying to create shelter so you don't have things like the Simmons Building. And so you've had a committee that's really worked together and you all, I'm sure are aware that you had an opening in December of the extreme weather shelter that has now been opening and now is faced with a challenge as winter starts to go to crows. Once it gets really hot in the summer, how they're going to remain open. So it's a, it's a, it's a challenge. So this systems-based approach, coordinated entry, using Housing First, it demands measurement. That which is measured gets done and I'm sure you all practice that here. And so the Data Metrics Committee's been working hard to try to figure out what's the baseline numbers of homeless people that are here in Lee County. And a couple of questions. One of the works that they have going on now is to try to encourage everyone to participate in the same data management system. So everybody's putting the data about the clients they're serving into the same system. So then you can determine how are we doing? That gives you a chance to say, are our numbers going up or down? Are they families, are they individuals, are they living in shelter? Another unit of measurement that this will give the community, and again, steps are, we're moving toward that here, is how long are people homeless? What's the duration of their homelessness? It's been shown that the longer an individual or family's homeless, the more devastating the impact of that homelessness is upon them. So especially for children in a homeless situation, it really affects their ability to learn. It affects a family's sense of self-esteem, self-worth. So the more you can narrow, and you don't know that unless you have a unit of measurement. Let's say it's a hundred and twenty days is the average time of homelessness now in Lee County. We don't know that yet. Let's say that it is, well, a goal might be, well, over this next year, we'd like to get that down to ninety because we're, we're never going to end homelessness, but we can reduce it by systems management to the smallest number, maybe we get it down to thirty days. Wouldn't that be a great thing for Sanford and Lee County, be able to say? And this team is really working toward doing that. You're really working toward a model that looks at are, how many people are becoming homeless in Lee County each month? How many people are moving out to permanent housing? Inflow, outflow. And when this number over here is higher than the one over here, the system is getting cocked. And so you have to have those sort of metrics to be able to determine that. I think already people are taking note of what's happening here. Both Anson and Harnett Counties, Jeffrey and I have had conversations with them. They would like to do what Lee County's doing, which is important because a lot of times we think if we do more for the homeless in our home place, it will attract folks other. Well, how about if they are attracted by the model of response that Lee County is doing? So a lot, already it's been accomplished, the provision of the shelter, the Emergency Hotel Fund that you all are helping to support, as well as the enthusiasm right now that's really around finding out where all the homeless are and making connection with them and letting them know that we're working hard to provide housing. And so one of the things that was done recently was a point in time count. And so we're going to ask Wayne Chu to come up and just share with you all a little bit about that experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening madam chair. Distinguished members of the board. Like they said, my name is Wayne Eric Chu. My education's in disaster management. I'm working right now on my master's degree. Before that, I have a BA in healthcare studies and also worked in many hospitals throughout North Carolina and West New York. So having spent time in an emergency room for years and spent time in surgery, working in surgery, I've seen homelessness. I've seen the effects of it and met these people firsthand. I'm also on the board of the Brother Life Ministries and I just want to thank you and your leadership for your participation and support of that extreme weather shelter. Because you know, we think of homeless people sometimes stereotypically. What if a cat, three or four or five hurricane rolls through and one of us becomes homeless? And we don't have the finances to go someplace else or we don't have family or a house, a house to go to. So it's not just, it's not just what we did on January thirty-first was, the pick count was to find out all the data and stuff, but to really think about the real issues of homelessness and how quick it can happen. A lot of us are just paycheck away from homelessness. I just want to say that leadership is seized and not so much by the words, but by rolling up your sleeves, having the passion of attitude and getting the work done. I'm proud to be a part of the S3 Housing Connect because they're passionate and they're working hard to solve the problems that we have with homelessness. And as I look around with, to see Karen Kennedy and Terry and all these volunteers, January thirty-first was an amazing time to see over thirty volunteers going out there counting homeless people. And a lot of homeless people, you know, they live in cars. Working at the Brother Life, doing my work at the Brother Life, I've seen people that work and live in their car. They go to work every day. They just want a house. And that's why I, that's what attracted me with the Housing First model. So one of the things when we did the count on January thirty-first, we looked at, well, so what's the data showing us? So the data's showing us from January, from January two thousand seventeen to January, to January two thousand eighteen, that we've doubled, it's doubled. There's fifty-one in shelter and fifteen, fifty-one out of shelter. So something's going on and we're trying, we're trying to extrapolate data and to see exactly what's going on. The other thing that really amazed me about this whole thing is to see Democrats and Republicans working together, to see men and women working together of all ages, young, young people and older people like myself, working together on this one mission to get this done, to find out what the issues are. And being from the healthcare field, one question that I have in mind is, so how much does it cost? What's the cost savings in solving this problem of homelessness? Because you have homeless people on the street, they have congestive heart failure, they have arthritis or whatever. And so being, being on the street, it worsens that condition. It makes it worse. So then they have to go to the ER and we all know an ER visit, even at its lightest, it's a few hundred dollars and it's, at its highest is thousands of dollars. Well, part of the problem for them having to go to the ER is because they're out on the streets. They, they have no protection and so they're sick, they have chronic illness. So they have to go, they have to go to ER several times a month. So just right there in my mind, and I'm talking about national, national studies now. So we want to see what's going on in Lee County here. So with the fifty-one and fifty-one is a hundred and two, we want to see what those affect. So we're going to mine that data and take a look at it. So when, so when you have the inability to take the most basic of healthcare needs and it leads to repetitive emergency room visits, like I said, and hospital omissions, so we know, I believe that we'll find out that we're saving money here. And it's such a privilege to have done this, this point in time count and to find out exactly what's going on. Like I said, to see all these people, the dedication, to see council persons coming in at three o'clock in the morning and being a part of this whole thing. To see Mayor Chet Mann and his leadership, to see, I mean, just for listening, I mean, this is leadership here. This is leadership in action. And it's just a privilege to be a part of S3 Housing Connect, to be a part of the Brother Life Ministry and the Extreme Weather Shelter. So I just want to thank you for your time and thank you for the privilege of standing before you and explaining just how much this has meant to me. And I know that what we're getting done here is going to matter and it's going to mean something, very important. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chief, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rachel Picard and I'm the intern for S3 Housing Connect. I was born and raised in Sanford, North Carolina and I've lived here all my life. So it's been such an honor to be able to work for Sanford and to see homelessness decrease here. It's just been such a good feeling. And I've had many new experiences through this internship. I've been able to lead committee meetings and attend them. I've been able to work with various nonprofit organizations in Lee County and Sanford. But one of the most fun things I've been able to do is to create the website for S3 Housing Connect with Kelly Miller, who works at the city. So I'm going to show you that website real quick. So this is the website we created. The homepage has the mission statement and just a little bit of information about us. If you click on the About Us tab, it has the history of S3 Housing Connect and the structure of how it's set up. The agenda and meeting notes are just from all of our previous S3 Housing Connect meetings. And the Resources tab is probably the most important one on here because it contains the resource booklet for Sanford and Lee County. So what that is, is it's just a booklet that has all of the nonprofit organizations and resources that homeless or needy people can use if they need any help. The Committees tab has all of our different committees. It has a little bit of information about each of them and how to get involved with them. The Calendar tab just has all of our upcoming events and things that S3 Housing Connect is doing. The Blog tab just has a little bit of things I've written about S3 Housing Connect. The Get Involved tab has volunteer opportunities and it will have a donation opportunity at some point. And then the Contact Us tab has ways that you can contact us to get involved if you're interested in joining S3 Housing Connect. So that's the website that I was able to help create. And like I said, I've just had so many new opportunities through this internship. I mean, I had never created a website before, so this was all brand new to me and I'm still learning so many new things through it. And I just really wanted to say thank you because not only has this internship given me so many new opportunities, but the most important thing it's done is it's really helped me figure out what I want to do with the rest of my life. I'm currently a senior at NC State University and I've been studying nonprofit organizations, so I knew I wanted to work with that. But seeing all the passion and drive that the members of S3 Housing Connect have for homelessness and for making this issue or fixing this issue has just made me realize how passionate I am about homelessness. And so I've decided that I want to continue working with that too when I graduate. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of S3 Housing Connect for sharing that passion and drive with me and thank you to all of you for giving me the chance to have this internship.
Thank you Rachel, for all your hard work. That's impressive.
Wonderful to come to work every day in the summer and have us. You cannot be in a bad mood with Rachel sitting next to you with that enthusiasm. So that made that awesome. You see that we have a lot of committed individuals with this project. In my short thirty years here plus, this has been one of the largest projects that has had across the board commitment and enthusiasm to address. And for that, it has been exciting. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you all for your support. You have a wealth of knowledge sitting here about the homelessness strategy and I'd like to open it up for questions.
I have one. What do you find is a primary reason that we're having homelessness? The degree that we're having it now?
Jeffrey's going to take that one because he walks amongst them.
And Jeffrey is one of those people that I go in the homeless camps right behind.
That, that actually is a very difficult question because it runs the gambit. Mental health, substance abuse are two of the largest things that we run across. And because of the fact that our shelters here, generally the shelters will, if you're not sober, they won't allow you to stay. Housing First Model says if, even if you are experiencing an issue, a person can be sober for five days, but you still may test. So if you fail to test, then you're not allowed to stay. What we're running into for the most part is not having the ability to put those people in housing, but it is one of the biggest problems because it itself can disqualify, disqualify you from being able to get into the shelter itself.
I have another question for you Jeff. When you did your point in time count, how did it break down between city and county? Or did y'all do any kind of, just do a total or did you break it down?
We sent, we sent teams out to every known location that we had and we've been scouting. We did the count once in October. So we were able to map out some of the places that we knew they were going to be. We also relied on word of mouth, we put the word out, we're going to be doing it. We took suggestions from people and the majority were in the city. It's going to be in the city mostly because it's the easiest place to get around. It's the easiest way to get to what you're looking for. Now, there was one also in Broadway, there's some in the county, but for the most part, they will gravitate towards the city.
Rachel's trying to see if she can find the map. There it is, fourth, fifth one down. Up one, up six, yep.
Okay, good.
Maybe not. Anyway, on our website, Don and GIS. We don't have any homeless sites.
It's us, not you.
But GIS did a map of all the homeless sites that we know about and we have sent teams out to them and that map is on the website.
One question I had, I know it was a rude awakening for me, you know, when my kids started going to school and then it became more of an issue, it seemed like every year.
Oh, thank you, very good.
Yeah. We have fairies in the back or magicians or something like that. But you know, we would have students come to school in elementary, middle and high school that were homeless, living in their cars. Did you guys reach out to the school system too? Or is that a separate population?
It is a separate population. I'll let Jeffrey speak to that because their definition of homelessness is different.
Is different, right, I understand. And the only reason why, you know, when you gave the numbers, just knowing what I hear from talking to teachers and principals, there's probably that many or more right now in our school system.
The school system is counting about three hundred.
Okay, that's what I, right, okay.
Now, the school system uses the McKinney-Vance standard, which means if you're doubled up and living overcrowded and I say you've lost your place, but you're able to stay in someone else's house, they'll still count you as homeless because you don't have a home of your own.
Right.
HUD's definition and what we counted is literally homeless.
Okay.
Which means you're either living in a shelter or a place not made for human habitation, like your car or the woods. Or you're living in transitional housing or you're exiting an institution where you stayed ninety days or more and prior to going in, you were homeless. A lot of times our vision of homeless is what we see on television. It's the person with their sign standing there with work for food. The vast majority of times, that person is not homeless. They make, a lot of them make very, very good money. And they make enough to be able to stay in a hotel if they pay for it themselves, they're not considered homeless. The people that you, that you don't see, the invisible homeless, I've mentioned to the team quite a few times, is go to Walmart. Go to Walmart at night and look where the lights are away from the store and look at where the power lines are, look at where the lights are out there. And you look for the car loaded, full of clothes in the back and there's a mother in there with her children. Those are, those are people, the homeless for the most part, don't want to be seen. So they're not standing out with a sign in their hand, they're not standing out asking for a handout. Generally, they're trying to keep their kids from having to experience the hardest parts of homelessness, so they try to remain invisible. If you want to see them, you have to actually make an effort to look for them. And that's what we're doing. We're going out to look for them.
Okay, thank you Jeffrey.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay.
One quick question. Jeffrey, do they, do some of these people, I'm a police officer, so I work as a officer and I see exactly what you're talking about, literally past night shift, guys about my dad's age and in the Walmart parking lot. And it's just so sad, but are most of them receptive to your help? Or do some of them let pride get in the way? Sorry.
You're going to run the gambit. Whenever it's, whenever it's like that, we did, we did send out and they would approach them. You have to be careful approaching the cars, you have to be careful approaching the camps because just like you would feel about your home, it may not have a door and it may not have electricity, but it's still their home. So you've got to be respectful when you go up and it's about the approach. And if you don't, please don't, you don't go in- And if you don't, please don't, you, you don't go in with, oh, I'm so sorry about your situation. But, show them the same respect that you would want if someone entered your home. And our biggest thing was how do we approach them? And we did classes prior to going out, teaching people how to approach. And for the most part, they are receptive. There were very few refusals to give information. The vast majority, over ninety, ninety-five percent, agreed to go ahead and do it.
Good, thank you.
Can I?
Thank, thank you to everybody that spoke tonight and, and for the other volunteers that are here and all your hard work. Um, it's a problem that we don't wanna have in Lee County. But, um, you know, it, it's something certainly that, that's not, um, unique to our county. But, I'm, I'm really proud of your efforts in this community. I've always said, you know, when Lee County makes up its mind to solve a problem, it gets it done. It's just gonna take some hard work, but, um, I'm, I'm really encouraged by what we're hearing tonight. And, um, we'll continue to support you and, and I, I think, um, hopefully next year at this time, have a much better report. But, I do appreciate everything that you do, thank you. Um, okay, moving on to new business. We'll circle back around because of timeliness, uh, finding the attorney. There we go, thank you. Because of timeliness, we need to move into consideration of the Economic Development Project, Project Wolfpack. And you'll see that on page one sixty. Uh, but as, um, our attorney has said, Ms. Parrish, that, you know, you do have an updated abstract in your additional items. So, we'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Um, so we've had, Project Wolfpack is on, um, Mr. George, we have the public hearing. So, if you want to move forward, we will have to have a vote on the policy to waive the policy of voting, and ask for a vote as well.
Okay, so, we need the vote to waive the policy. And then...
For both Project Temperature and Project Wolfpack.
Right.
Both at the same time to waive the policy.
So, I'll make a motion that we waive the current policy to allow us to vote on, uh, consideration of proposed economic development projects, Project Wolfpack and Project Temperature.
Okay. Any questions for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. All right.
Disreg, disregard, we waive the policy just because of, um, time constraints.
Right, right, because we're not gonna meet until...
Understood.
End of March, right.
Madam Chair, I have a motion to, uh, move ahead with the, uh, proposed economic development, uh, for Project Wolfpack. And our motion is to go ahead and, um, award the incentive.
Okay. Any questions for discussion on the motion for Project Wolfpack? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have waived the motion, uh, waived the policy for Project Temperature. So, is there consideration for that project?
Madam Chair, I move that we, uh, move forward with the incentive proposed, uh, by the economic development group, Saga, for, uh, Project Temperature.
Okay, any questions for discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the Economic Development Project Temperature, say aye. Aye, opposed?
No.
All right, and Project Eagle is...
We have time on.
Right, okay. I, I just wanted to clarify that, make sure I hadn't missed something. Okay, um, thank you very much. We'll move into item C, request for approval for lease space on the third floor of the Buggy Factory Building. Ms. Johnny Martin, do you...
Well, I'm also handing out something she sent me today.
Okay.
Um, so, um, she actually has two. Go ahead, Johnny, I'm gonna let you take it.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Um, we have a progressive contracting company, a request to lease space in the Sanford Buggy Building, um, Suite 304, Office D, to Tim Sawmier of TYGES Associates. And they are a staffing company for manufacturing and healthcare services. They would occupy one office in that Suite 304. And then, um, Friday, we got a, um, approved lease also for, in Suite 303, two offices, A and C, and one digital health and benefits, healthcare benefits company is, um, asking to lease space in there. And I would just like to bring these to your attention for your approval to have these businesses in the building.
Any questions for discussion from Ms. Martin?
For example, on 303 and 304, is 312 a different space altogether? I'm just looking at the map, I don't know what it means.
Okay.
312.
Not familiar with 312, can I look at what you're looking at?
I just see 312 in the block, I don't know what it means.
Okay, um...
That's actually the stairwell.
Okay, it's this one, A and C, these two offices, and then you got another map today.
No. Yeah, this was the other map, 312 right now.
It's blocked off, I didn't know what it was. I just wanted to know.
I think that's just a, for location purposes.
An architectural detail.
You know I don't.
Any other questions? Any questions? Okay, so, how, help me, how, how many more vacant, um, spaces, offices are there?
After, um, the last request for the, the two, um, we'll have three offices left available on, on the third floor. And then, we'll be fully leased.
Okay, good, okay. All right. Okay, is there a motion?
Just a question, what about any issues with parking? That seems to be trouble at lunchtime sometimes.
Um, the good thing that these offices are like just one-person offices, so it's not like we're running to a place that has five or six employees in there.
Are people coming to these offices, or there's, they're just working in these offices?
Most of them are just working at them, it's just a, a satellite office of some kind.
Thank you.
I got one question. Is this the same size office that like Woods Duster, or was that, was that a bigger space?
Okay, like Woods has a whole suite.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, his is a suite of six. Whereas, um, Suite 303 and 304, we're actually leasing them per office. So, these people are taking one office out of a suite of four, or two offices out of a suite of four.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
Okay, good.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, uh, item D, report from the Elections Director on Voting Equipment in the upcoming election. Mr. Holland, good evening.
Good evening. So, before I speak on the matter at hand, I want to let you all know, remind you all, if you all ever have any questions, elections related, or concerns, please come and see me. I will be happy to help any way we can. I also wanna thank, uh, my Deputy Director Karen Marisite for joining us this evening. Very lucky to have her, and we're also very lucky to have Nancy Kimble, the former director. Uh, Nancy was the director for many years and she has been a great asset for Lee County over the years. But, she's also been a great help to me, whether it's coming in and helping us out with testing equipment or just answering the phone if I have a question or concern or wanna bounce an idea off of her. So, very lucky to have Nancy still be willing to help us, uh, so, very thankful for that. Now, to the matter at hand, purchasing equipment for the 2018 election. I said them, sure.
You all have a supplement for the agenda in front of you. You might wanna pull that out because the Board of Elections, uh, voted on, uh, Wednesday night what to do. So, we have voting equipment i- in May?
Yes.
So, just make sure you all pull that one.
Got it.
It's the item that has a bunch of FYs right here in the middle and, um, he was very thorough in the, uh, in licensure area to tell you what it's gonna cost you in the future.
Well, I was fortunate to have a lot of help with that, Jennifer, it was a great help.
We've got a lot of stuff in our pockets tonight.
I can imagine.
That looks the same.
Just so you know that, that, um, the current equipment we have is no longer certified by the state, so we cannot use it for the primary.
Yep, and that's, that's where we were going. In 2015, actually, uh, Session Law, uh, 381 states that any direct-record electronic device, or DRE, is currently certified by the State Board, which do not use paper ballots, shall be decertified and shall not be used in any election held on or after September first, 2019, for counties that use direct-record electronic voting machines on Election Day as of January first, 2015, and January first, 2018, for all other counties. So, what that means for us in Lee County and eleven other counties across the state is the, uh, as Mr. Crump said, our equipment's no longer certified and we have to purchase new equipment. In July of 2017, the Board of Commissioners approved $196,000 for, uh, an equipment purchase in the fiscal year 2018. When you come to vote on Election Day or you come to early voting, you'll see two different types of machines. You'll see a ballot marking device, which is what is no longer certified, and you will see a voting tabulator. Uh, currently, we have a new machine that is certified by the State Board of Elections, is the DS-200. It is a voting tabulator. However, we do not have a new, um, ADA marking device or Americans with Disability Act. So, on February fourteenth, the Lee County Board of Elections met. It's regularly scheduled meeting to approve the purchase. And if, if the requested, uh, purchase was approved by the Board of Commissioners, it would actually only be for about two-thirds of the budgeted amount. The purchase of the DS-200s would actually allow the, uh, the ADA device or the auto mark to be purchased, or to be leased at no cost for the 2018 election year. While in the 2018 election year, it is our hope that a new ADA compliant machine will be certified and purchase can, purchases can be made in either 2019 or 2020. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
How long have we had the current machines?
The current machines were purchased in 2006, they were first used in 2007. Uh, the machine that we have, the voting tabulator, known as the M-100, was actually first introduced in 1995 by ESN S.R. Was introduced and I think was put in, in 1996.
Do you have any idea, when we make this transition, how long they'll be used?
Uh, hopefully we'll get, I, we've gotten twelve years out of these, hopefully we can get between eight to ten years on that. With the changing of, and I'm being very generous, with the changing in technology, there, there's always something that could be, uh, introduced that we would need.
Is the state providing us any financial support?
No, I wish they were, in 2005...
No hava, no hava funds.
No hava funds, exactly. In 2005, 2006, there are Help America Vote funds to purchase the new equipment. At this time, there is, uh, no fund for that. There was a bill in the legislature that never made it out of committee to help provide us with funds.
So, the reason we're changing equipment is because of technology, because it's what we got to wore out?
Uh, for the ADA compliant machines, they are no longer certified for the ballot, for the actual ballot tabulators. Um, tho- those machines have been great, but they're, they're no longer working as well. If we go ahead and purchase these DS-200s, we will still get a small trade-in allowance. If we wait any longer, I do not believe that will be available. Uh, i- it's, and it's definitely in need at this time.
That, that was gonna be my question, progressive. So, we do get a little bit of, I mean, I, I was like, what do we do with the old ones? 'Cause they're big pieces of equipment, so we can trade them back in and get some credit for them.
Yes, ma'am.
A little bit, okay.
I think that's a small trade-in.
It, it is. It is, unfortunately. Uh, we were looking today to see how much, um, a memory card would actually cost if we could find them for the new machines. And they were only available on eBay, Amazon, and places like that. And they were ranging from a hundred dollars to three hundred dollars is what I was seeing, so...
And you're not sure they're gonna work when you get them?
Yeah, not even sure if we can get them. And when you look at the maintenance cost from the last year, it costs us, I believe, $6,200 to maintain our machines versus $2,000 will be in the first, uh, for the first, uh, five years for our DS-200s.
Is that $6,200 per election?
It's per year, it's per fiscal year, yes, sir.
Maintenance on the machines?
On the old machines, yes, sir.
Some years, we have, you know, upwards of three elections, and some years, when we have one. So, it just depends on the year, but we get the same rate.
Alrighty.
O two.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Holland, or? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you so much for your hard work. Nice to see you, Ms. Kimble. Thank you.
Send us data thinking, though.
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
By the way, I did talk to Representative Salz quite a bit, um, over the last two weeks. And I can tell you that he did try to go to bat for us to try to get, um, some relief on this matter, so, um, but, uh, the bill was going nowhere in the Senate, so...
Right. Needs to be a T-shirt.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, moving on to the new item, uh, under new business, item E, the relocation of the Shallowell Graves. And I'll let Mr. Crump to share the latest information.
Yes, before you, you should have a letter dated February thirteenth, 2018, that came from L.E. Pages, who's the Division Right-of-Lay Agent, um, informing members of the Lee County Board of Commissioners, um, that with the Highway Forty-two project, two hun- approximately 230 graves will be, um, discentered, which is a new word for me. Need to look that up, but that's what they are saying. And that, um, the Lee County Board of Commissioners will need to approve, um, this under North Carolina General Statute 65-106, which is attached to the letter. It's interesting to read the statute because it doesn't necessarily say that the board is approving the move of the graves, simply that you are going to participate in the, in making sure that the laws are followed and that you're probably gonna designate Mr. Kane as your Health Director to supervise that removal. And it doesn't say you may do this or anything of such, it says you shall do that. So, the legislature is instructing you to do this. Did I say that right? Ms. Parrish?
According to G.
It doesn't say anything about they shall pay for our help.
No, we're volunteering Mr. Kane's services and, and I was talking to Ms. Parrish. We do have a cemetery committee that we don't, they haven't used a lot.
Right.
It's something you probably could get them involved with, with Mr. Kane, if they wanted to help supervise. Um, because during this whole process, at the end, the, whatever happens has to be, um, um, recorded at the registered deeds, you know, with all the some, other cemetery information that we have. So, it's an interesting law and, um, so, basically because the, the DOT has, is going to be condemning this, we need to participate.
Supervise.
Supervise, excuse me.
No. That's not true.
I had a question for Mr. Kane.
And actually, Mr. Kane knows a lot more about this.
If I may. No, no offense, but I'm just...
No, I'm fine, I'm glad to hand this on.
I'm learning as I go.
Uh, well, I understand, but I, um, have you met with anybody from the church yet?
No, ma'am.
Okay, 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 so, I guess...
I just found out about this Friday afternoon about four, four-thirty.
Oh, bless you, okay. Well, can you kinda walk us through what you know so far?
What I've learned so far is the DOT has to apply through Arbital Record Section for what they're planning to do with the graves, once, uh, they've gotta apply. But they're, they've got thirty days to inform the families or closest of kin. They have to give information to the closest of kin, um, provide application to us where they're moving or disentering the graves to. And that information has to be sent back to us within thirty days of applying. And we have to get that information verified and certified once that's complete.
So, if a family member has someone buried there in that section, um, there's about sixty days of...
My understanding right now is thirty days to apply. I've not heard the exact amount of time it take, will be allowed to take to move the grave.
Right.
I don't have that information yet.
Okay. I, I, I do know, I know, um, in going to, I'm, I'm asking some of you that went to those meetings two or three years ago at Shallowell to help refresh my memory, but it seems like they would work with the families in a reasonable time? I think to...
Are they gonna have to sign off, the family will have to sign off on something, or do you know that?
Are they gonna have to sign off, the family will have to sign off on something, or do you know that?
I do not know that yet.
Yeah, it would seem that-
The information that, and like I said, it's, it's very little so far as they do have to make an outreach to the next of kin to try to find someone.
Yeah, that's the point, because some folks are probably gonna refuse initially, and I don't know what that is. Counselor, do you know if that delays, or what happens, or what the next step is for a family that refuses to participate?
I, I don't, I can find that out, cause the only thing that I can see in this statute is the thirty-day writ notice that they have to give to the, the next of kin.
Right.
And then, but I, but I'm not certain if they have any, like, appeal rights to that.
Right, we'd think they would, but.
That is something that I had someone email the state today to ask that question, so we're trying to get some clarification on that. Like, late Saturday, he emailed.
You just kinda copy us on it.
The old saying, rest in peace doesn't, doesn't matter in this situation. But I would think that we certainly ought to try and get that information as quickly as possible because families are gonna have emotional experiences that will wind up calling some of us, and we ought to note in advance.
Just copy us on it when you get information of the grave.
Yes, ma'am.
John, I was looking in your letter, um, you said it was far less than two hundred when these public hearings were held
Yes, ma'am.
several, couple, two or three years ago.
It was about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty.
Why did it go to somewhere?
There was, yeah, that's smart.
That they've, they've found that in between the marked graves or other graves, yeah.
The thing that interests me is I'm looking paragraph D, when they're talking about the sum for this, uh, removal shouldn't exceed two hundred dollars per year. I don't think that's gonna happen.
Well, my question today was if a family member wants to move to somewhere else, who pays for that? Because they may have a choice.
Yeah, Don Kavaskas has been told by the D O T that they pay, they'll pay everything.
That's, that's what, that's what they told them at the meeting.
That number doesn't mean anything, does it?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't need to get it in writing.
Right.
Yeah, but I don't think they'd agree if, if spouses were side by side and the line's here to move both. And I think that's one of the touch points.
Yeah, yeah, one to the side, one to the other.
Been talking with a member of the church, they had said that they would keep spouses and children together, but that was it. But then if you have spouses and children and the children's spouse, you know, yeah, I don't know how that works, but maybe we can get some-
Another issue that we need to-
Absolutely.
Well, I got, I, I just wonder if this is a state statute they doing this under, I guess? Uh, isn't there any federal statutes that cover, I know you know, when you enter the federal land, you run into a different statute, I guess?
I don't think so. That would probably, if it was ninety-five or something like that, it would be good.
Okay.
No federal church nation, that doesn't matter.
No, there's no federal assistance, uh, assistance on that rule?
Any more questions for Mr. Kane?
And at the March nineteenth meeting, we'll be bringing a resolution back to the board on this matter. So we wanted to introduce it tonight and get these questions and get these questions answered before the next meeting of the board.
John.
Yes, sir.
That's U S four twenty-one, right?
It's, no, it's, 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 N C forty-two.
N C forty-two, okay. I was gonna say, hell, U S no, there had to be some federal participation.
Resident is four twenty-one.
Okay.
It's old, it was old four twenty-one, yeah. Right, right.
Who's, that, that I think you're gonna be the contact person with the church.
No, that is not what he does. No, he is basically the supervisor to make sure that, that the, that the graves are moved according to state statute, not that he's the one notifying the church members. D O T notifies the church members, and that they have thirty days to find out the next of kin of each grave.
Now, I understand that part. I know it's wrong in that regard, but the county needs someone to make contact with the, the, the minister.
Give him a heads up?
Yes, and to find out if they have accumulated questions that we don't know answers to before we jump off.
Okay.
And since it's just two, we need to find out what they might be asking. I realize that many of them will get their own attorneys and all that, but we still have a, a duty to be involved. We forced to by the statute, so let's do as much as we can.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to our next added item, um, is item F, uh, D S I, and that's also in your packet of additional information. And again, it's an abstract, um, funding request for the tobacco warehouse project. And Jennifer's here. Ms. Sinclair, come up.
Well, she's on her way up here, let, let the board know that I've met with D S I twice on this matter. And last week, the chair and the vice chair attended the meeting as well, and that's why this item was added tonight.
Okay, can someone give us a quick overview of what you've been meeting to discuss?
Would you like me to do that? She's, she's gonna give you the skinny. Yeah.
The quickie, and I've got my vice chair, Steve Brewer, here as well. Um, we have an opportunity from a, an outside, um, of Sanford, but in North Carolina developer, to go into a public-private partnership on the tobacco warehouse, which is located at five thirteen Wicker Street. So that's what we've been meeting about, to go over his ideas and proposals and see if it's something that we are interested in pursuing. So the letter that you have in there is a request, um, for fifty-fifty funding between the county and the city to have, um, his proposal reviewed by the School of Government's Department of Finance Initiative, and also to have a phase one environmental done on that property. That information would be owned by D S I, if we did that.
And D S I has the property under contract right now?
The developer has the property under contract, yes.
I thought the D S I had, uh, under contract.
Developers got that, yeah.
I'm glad I asked.
And, and we've brought, um, Commissioner Odom and I thought we needed to discuss it tonight because there, there is a deadline of March twenty-second.
Yes.
Might soon have to vote on it before our next meeting, and review this stuff?
What was the question?
He, he, he said, we don't have to vote on it tonight, we can wait till our next meeting.
I, I think this was, uh, caused with that deadline, and we was moving on it tonight.
Yes.
All right, what's the deadline? Uh, this is my first time saying-
No, 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 we, we understand.
All right, well, that's-
So the, um, the deadline is with the contract currently, that's the, the developer has on the property. And this study is something that, um, we'd like to have done to see if it's something we wanna move forward on before we have to start making much bigger decisions.
So he's in the due diligence period?
He's in the due diligence period, yes.
On the offer to purchase.
What is the timeline, maybe I missed it?
So his due diligence period ends in March, um, at which point the contract will extend or not extend, whether or not we wanna go forward with this project or not.
So who wants to go forward with the project?
All of us, the city, the county, D S I, um, if it's something we wanna pursue. It is for residential and commercial development. Um, he's given us a proposal, a first draft proposal.
Somebody's choosing to purchase this building?
Yes.
And gonna turn it into- He wants us to make sure that this is, um, so he wants us to make sure that this property is a go? Instead of doing that himself, is what you're asking me?
No, he's interested, he's asking, he's putting together a proposal for us to go in on it together.
When you're ready to buy a home, it's your due diligence to go find out if there's termites and everything else. Not the seller, but the buyer.
Right.
In this particular case, the buyer is asking us to do the due diligence for him.
He's doing some of his own due diligence, he is asking us to do the phase one.
Just in his due dig- due diligence. Then, then if you get through beyond the due diligence period, he has asked for, um, basically economic incentives to, um, make it worthwhile to do the project. He's also talked about, um, loans that may be forgivable, which in this project may, are probably not allowed, but he has asked for it. So there are some other things that the city and the county have been asked to do going forward from a financial perspective, and that's why we're doing the financial analysis through the School of Government. They have a department that looks at these type of community development projects and analyzes them to see if they're actually viable and, uh, gives, would give D S I, the city and the county, the opinion of whether, you know, it's worth our while to stick in the game here. So why wouldn't we know that information prior to this information? I mean, before, why wouldn't we wanna know even going past that second, all that stuff you're talking about is viable, before we give money to this portion? You know, if you wanna do this, and all of a sudden it falls through on the second, on everything you just stated? That's why we wanna own the information, because there are other developers in- interested in the property. So if it falls through with this developer, then, you know, we could market that to other developers who have shown interest in the property.
I agree with that thinking, and I understand that this is what the nine thousand dollars is about. How long will this study be good for? For one year, two years?
The D F I study from the School of Government? Is that what you're asking?
Whatever we're paying for here.
Yes, ma'am.
How, how long will it be good for?
This would be a specific analysis just to this proposal.
Right.
So the, of the nine thousand, the two who's in there, third, I'll explain this, cause you're sharing this with the city, so I think it was eighteen thousand total. Thirteen thousand of that eight, thirteen thousand of that eighteen thousand was for the study with de- development finance. That is a specific analysis of the proposal that was given to D S I. So that study's, that study's, um, significance is just to that proposal that was submitted. Now, the other five thousand that's being split between the two of the twenty-five hundred is for a phase one. That will be good basically indefinitely, that's where you would retain that, so if these, these guys walk away, somebody else comes in, you would still have a phase one.
So the twenty-five hundred dollar investment is what we get to keep for, and it's good for?
Right, for indefinitely, yeah, exactly.
All right, now, okay, this is February nineteenth. You're trying to get this done tonight to meet what deadline?
March twenty-second.
Well, finally, and, and, I, I-
The due diligence-
The due diligence.
That's what I've been asking, when, what is the timeline? So the question was raised, I think, about doing it-
Well, that's why I heard the twenty-third, and that's why I was like, why do we have to jump so quick at this on, tonight? Who owns the building?
Simco, Simco owns the building, it's, uh, Brad Simpson and his family members own that building.
I think, no, go ahead, no, no, no. Well, I, I think, um, you know, uh, I'm, I'm pulling up my calendar here to make sure I'm telling you correctly. Uh, our next meeting will be the nineteenth, so, um, the reason-
Oh, the nineteenth?
Sorry, March nineteenth, yes. So that's one of the reasons why we felt like we needed to bring it tonight.
That helps me.
Because with the closing date being the twenty-second, that's a quick turnaround to pull everybody-
Due diligence periods, but you can always extend the due diligence periods for the person making an offer on a building.
You can try.
I, I mean, I've done, right, right.
Now, that, uh, uh, I-
This would give thirty days.
I have a better understanding of what you're trying to do now. I understand that even for the twen- uh, I'm not real happy about the sixty-five hundred dollars, but the twenty-five hundred is a benefit to us anyway, just having that information ourselves for marketing.
So this is, this is a private owned bill-
Privately owned building.
So, uh, once they sell this, are they gonna pay us back for helping them out to sell it? Or this is, or no? No, they would actually be coming back to you for more.
For more?
Yes, sir. And this is, this is, uh, you know, community development projects like this are being done all over the state. And basically, you're taking property that isn't being used and trying to create a use for it. And so this particular pop- property, if it's not used for the apartments and, and the commercial use, will end up being probably just warehouse and not have a whole lot of value to the, to the community, so.
So value of that property, yeah.
About five hundred thousand dollars, cause that's what, that's what the option is for on the, on the purchase price is for the property. And it is a big tract of property, and it does, um, get awful close to the-
New school.
New school.
Um, one, one of the things, you know, in speaking, uh, to the feasibility study, uh, Robert, with the sixty-five hundred, you know, we, we did have a lot of discussion about that, you know, when we were meeting last week. Um, even though, as Marshall said, that, that is sort of tailored to this specific project, if you look and see, um, you know, the, the picture, kind of the before and after, the, a- as the warehouse stands now, and then the concept, uh, picture of it, you know, a, a lot of the information, I would think that it is compiled in that study can be used by other developers, correct?
Yeah, I, I think-
And, and, and this is, you know, kind of fits with the downtown revitalization plan that the city has. I'm sorry, go ahead, Marshall.
No, I was just gonna say, I think there would be certainties and value, um, even though this would be specifically the proposal that's presented. The value would be, is you would get some understanding, you know, the manager had mentioned forgivable loan, for example, and some of the other things that are being requested there. It would give us a better idea if we saw another proposal come in that had some of those elements, what we could expect, you know, what, what leverage we might have going forward. But to be clear, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, that would be a study specifically targeting the information that's presented in that proposal.
Sure.
But there are things we can extract from that to the, in the next proposal.
Right, right.
If we have to get another one, we already know, so.
And we'd own it, you know, we would own that information.
All the questions for that design.
This is kind of an annual order, kind of, a little bit.
Okay, the question's been called, um, all those in favor of the, um, approving the funding in the amount of nine thousand dollars, um, which will be matched by the city for, um, financial review of the developer's proposal and phase one environmental study? Say aye, aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right.
No, I, I do want to say this, and this was my first time saying it. I'm not saying it, that, everybody else may have had it, this is my first time seeing it. Now, uh-
I'm sorry, which, what did we talk?
This, this issue, yes, yes, yes. No, no, no.
Same issue, but, you know, with all this talk about technology, we ought to be able to get it a little sooner.
Agreed.
All right, thank you.
I apologize for that.
Um, okay, um, moving right along to item G, uh, is Commissioner Godson's item with the House bill. Um, and I, I keep calling it Morrissey's Law, I can't remember the number. Okay, thank you, okay, go ahead, Kevin, thank you.
Like I say, some, some weeks ago, a few weeks ago, uh, I'd like to thank everybody who received the, uh, email from, uh, Justin Rice, uh, asking for a resolution showing support for, uh, Marcy, Marcy's Law sent on his House Bill five eighty-one. Uh, just some of the support, um, it's passed the House, uh, ninety-eight seventeen. Uh, Representative Salz is in favor of it, has expressed that he's in favor of it. Representative Reeves, uh, expressed he's in favor of it. Uh, sixty-one sheriffs across the, uh, across North Carolina, including Sheriff Carter, has expressed, uh, favoritism of it. Uh, and basically in a nutshell, what it is, you know, some may say I'm a little biased because, you know, being a police officer, but in, in having dealing with victims all the time, and here, there's a little saying in law enforcement, many times, you know, it seems like the, uh, the bad guy has more rights than the victim. Uh, it just seems like it's that way sometime, but in, in a nutshell, and I'll just read out, out of here, cause I can't really say any better than this. If you, if you have, there's a little insert there, um, you know- You know, the bill gives crime victims the right to be notified of all court proceedings related to their case and to be present at them. It provides them the right to prevent disclosure of records that could be used to locate or harass the victim or the victim's family. And would allow the victims to opt out of providing information to prosecutors or defense attorneys. As under the proposal, victims would also have the right to receive full and timely restitution from defendants. And also, they would also be made aware that when their offender gets out an example of maybe perhaps domestic violence, that they are notified. And, and that part, you know, Council of Paris, I mean, we, well, I know we discussed that a little bit. They, they may already, with domestic violence, be notified anyway. I mean, I think they should do. And, and it's just, you know, it's just, there's, there's a lot of support for it across the country. But I, I'd just like to, you know, maybe have a little discussion, I'll just see how the board feels about it. I don't know if you've had a chance to read this or not, or look into it, but, you know, I, I tend to be in favor for it. You know, actually, we're not voting, obviously, we're just voting to have a resolution to show support.
And what, what I had talked with Commissioner Dodson about is, you know, if he would present it tonight and give everybody a chance, like he said, to look over it and ask questions, do some research or whatever, and then we could put it on our next agenda and, and provide a resolution.
I'm in full support of, of this particular bill as it improves the, the communication.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
With victims. It, quite honestly, was supposed to have been in place years ago. And sometimes there are many breakdowns for whatever reason. And victims, in some cases, have actually walked into the same area where a person was supposed to still be incarcerated, and they're sitting right there. And that is a frightening experience.
It's a heart stalker.
That's right.
Yep.
Exactly right. When you have no notice that that person is being released.
Okay.
But, so, any thoughts since the, how the stuff you do?
Well, no, I, just expanding on what Commissioner Reeves said there, you know, I thought that this stuff, you know, years ago, we was having, you know, notifying victims and giving them those rights, and, but, in my job now, it's got my life.
Indeed.
You know, so, yeah, I mean, sounds like something I could support.
Well, can we just make a motion to get a res- resolution together?
Make pardon?
Can we just make a motion to get a resolution together, and we can decide when not to vote on it next time?
Well, you somebody, you make it.
You somebody.
Wow.
I didn't wanna make anyone uncomfortable, but that's, that's really. I'll make a, make a motion that we just direct staff to get a rule, a resolution together for us to vote on, uh, next time, on the nineteenth, March nineteenth.
Okay, all those in favor that say aye? Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you, Kevin, and for bringing that to our attention and, and for the motion. And we will have that ready to be considered at our next meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, the last one's mine. And as I told the county manager, you know, I, I don't want this to dissolve into, you know, a, a long drawn out debate. I, I just wanted to kind of let the board know, you know, I, I, I think we all had broken hearts again last Wednesday when we saw the news about what happened in Parker, Florida. It is horrific for me as a parent and, and the job that we do especially and, and, you know, our counterparts down there in South Florida, to have to say, you know, we have another school shooting, you know, or this week's school shooting, or what, you know, I don't know what is happening, you know, we can debate that all night. But in, in light of what happened, it, those of you that know me know that I don't sit back quietly. And I, I feel like the rest of the board is the same way. You know, we need to make sure it's our job that our students and our staff are safe in our schools. And, and, and not just in our schools, you know. As, as I've said, Commissioner Reeves and I have had a long discussion over the weekend, you know, what is happening to our society when you can't send your child to school or go to church, or go to a concert, or a nightclub, you know, without at least a little bit in the back of your mind thinking, you know, where's the nearest exit? And do I need to be concerned about somebody that's here with a gun? And, and again, I, you know, don't wanna get too deep in debates, but the way I see it, our job is, at least in the short term, is to just make sure we do everything we can to keep our folks in our county safe. I know, you know, our sheriff does a good job, our superintendent, our, oh my gosh, you know, I mean, look at what happened Wednesday. We do not appreciate our teachers like we should. You know, those gentlemen got between those students and a guy with a gun. And I, I have full faith and confidence that, you know, our, our teachers in our county would do the same thing. You know, public, private school, you know, it doesn't matter, you know, teachers, it's a calling. And they, they do a whole lot more than teach these days. And they shouldn't have to, but they do. And, and I think we have done, at least in the conversations I've had with other commissioners and, and people in other parts of the state and, and the country here in the last few days, we have a lot to be proud of in Lee County. You know, we have SROs in all of our public schools, and we have well-trained staff. Our children do lockdown drills in school. So it's a shame that we have to be prepared for things like happened Wednesday, but I, I think we do a really good job where safety and security is concerned. But we can always do better. I've talked to the superintendent, and he met with the sheriff this afternoon. And right now, we're just in the process of setting up a meeting between myself, the manager, the superintendent, and the chair of the school board, and the sheriff, and, and just having a discussion on school safety. But I'm, I'm sure that will, you know, continue on and encompass, you know, just county safety. Because we do use school buildings and that kind of thing for, for other events. And I, I hadn't had a chance to reach out to Dr. Marchant yet, but I have a meeting with him tomorrow afternoon. So I'll, I'll bring that up with him to see if he'd like to be included in that meeting as well. So I, you know, just wanna get your feedback on, you know, if you think we need to be doing anything else at this moment. But, you know, right now, we just felt, I, I felt like, you know, we just, I needed to have a discussion with those individuals and see what they felt like the needs were, and if we need to do anything in addition to what we're already doing. And they asked me to ask all give, as I go into the meeting. If you wanna think about it, you know, and get back with me, you know, that's fine. We haven't quite got the date set yet, but we definitely wanna do it in the next few days. You know, it's not something that's gonna be a month from now.
We can just ask you to bring back to us what they missed.
Absolutely.
Hold up a minute.
Absolutely.
I, I would ask that you invite or include the city police as well.
Okay.
The chief can send a delegate or, obviously they can come themselves.
Okay.
But we need to coordinate all the law en- law enforcement agencies to sort of work, work to protect our schools.
I, I, I agree with what, uh, Commissioner Reeves said, but I also think that you should, uh, include the emergency management director. Because, I mean, what happened last week was because of a fire alarm.
Yeah.
That's right.
That made it so much worse.
Right.
And being able to respond and, and have a plan worked out that if that does happen and someone knows it, you know, you need to be prepared for anything.
And we've had those discussions, I believe. But now this might get Shane involved too. Okay. Any other suggestions or ideas at the moment? And, you know, call me, text me, email me, whatever, and I'll, I'll make sure, you know, with the clerk, maybe as soon as we find out when the meeting is, I'll just give you a heads up and let you know. So that if you do have something you want us to address, you know, you can get it to me before I go. Yes, sir.
I've got a question, maybe somebody can answer it. There, you mentioned the fire alarm. Do we have maps that identify or ways to identify where all their alarms are located?
The school does.
Yeah. How about online?
Mm-mm, mm-mm.
It's not.
It's not, you're talking about like a map of the school would show it online?
Yeah.
No. No.
Do you want a quick way to identify where it's coming from?
True.
When they go into newer buildings, you know, that point of entry, there is a, like, right out here, they would be able to go to a panel, and they would be able to see where that alarm was pulled. I'm not sure about some of the older schools that that has been updated, but that's definitely a feature in the newer buildings and newer schools.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I, I just kinda wanted to update you, and then also, I talked with Kevin Leonard, who's our executive director for the State County Commissioners Association. And, you know, just from a state level, you know, some of the things that we make and do. And so he was contacting our committee chairs for public safety and education and working with them at the end of the week and at the beginning of this week. And we may pull another state board meeting together because of this, based on what they decide to do. And then also, we'll be going to Washington in a couple of weeks. And reached out to the NACO director, and I'll be go- I was going to the environmental meetings and the economic development meetings, which I am supposed to go to, but I'll also be attending the justice meetings and the mental health meetings, committee meetings while I'm up there. Based on what happened Wednesday, and this will be kind of the priority topic for them. So I'll be bringing that back when we meet back in March as far as some of the decisions that they've made in Washington. And we'll be talking to our representatives while we're up there on these issues. And with that having been said, I think that's all on that. And we'll start with commissioner comments. Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna just, I'm sorry, we wanna hear from you.
It's okay.
No, 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 I just ju- it's, see, I had an arrow going down to the additional items, and I just was following it along. We, we do wanna hear.
I'm, uh, I'm passing out a, um, items for budget consideration update. I was asked for this by several of you. So I put it together with the Miss Mentor's help today, tried to take a snapshot of what we're looking at in the budget for next year and then the following year. 'Cause I'll be having this discussion with the department heads tomorrow about the nut we have to crack on the Wicker School. So you get to see it right there, and it kind of jumps at you pretty good. So we'll be saying no a lot going forward to some things, so. Should be a fun budget season. In my report, the Colton Road water update, at the last meeting, the board approved the bid to Sand Hills Contractors. We've issued a notice to proceed. We'll be meeting with the city and the architect this week to go over a couple of items and make sure we get the contract signed with Sand Hills. Construction hopefully will begin the first week of March and be finished by about May first. So we're moving along there. Some things just aren't as easy as they appear they should be, but we're working through them. The courthouse renovations, we held the preliminary meeting with the occupants at the courthouse on January twenty-ninth. We sent out the space needs survey. I've gotten almost all of those back, I'm just waiting on one more. The bar association has asked to amend their original request, so we're waiting on that. Mosley has already reviewed the surveys that they've already received. And instead of coming back in March, they'll be coming back to meet with each department that filled out a survey on February twenty-third and February twenty-seventh in the EOC, so. We're setting up appointments and already have most of the sheet filled out. So I did meet with the bar last week, just to let the board know they're still upset about this, losing their space in the courthouse over the years, and they, they want it back, so I'm working with them on that. Withers and Rabanel's working on the park's master plan, and, you know, they're doing their preliminary work right now. Not much update there. So already talked a little bit about Highway forty-two, so I'll just concentrate on Kelly Drive. I did discuss today my letter with the Division Eight engineer, and he's gonna be setting up a meeting to come and take a look at the pedestrian issue that we raised in the letter. 'Cause just from a TIP standpoint, this project, Kelly Drive relocation is not gonna score a lot of points. So we have to find other money to figure out how to get Kelly Drive moved. So in the budget process, we've begun the budget process with the department heads, and obviously you all kicked that off, and here is the estimates that I was asked for for the increases in next year, and they are estimates. So remember, they're estimates, and estimates mean numbers can change, so, and they normally will by June thirtieth, so.
And they don't usually decrease.
Um, they do when I'm making the decision. And they're all laughing, 'cause they know that's right.
Oh, man.
So, I have, and to show them, I, I do have red, two red pens for this year, not one.
Oh, wow.
So I know what's coming, so. I'm ready for them next year.
I want to back to the comment about Kelly Drive. Kelly Drive is on the, what, T A R P O?
It's, it's on, it was number one for our TarPO request from the county. But it is not scoring well at all by their major.
I'm just making sure it's the right committee that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get a better understanding of how that committee is supposed to benefit local government if we can't decide what's most important for us as a group.
That's what we've been asking them for. Eight years that I know of, so I don't know.
Well, I, I made a different, there were some cases when we were in, involved in getting like dirt roads paved and things like that, we've made some changes, and they've worked with us on that. Over the years, it has really changed. It's now become more about what the state wants done in the county than what.
Yeah, I hope yours got you right, we just did, but your latest, so.
Oh, yeah, it's been changed lately.
And it's frustrating.
Very.
Yeah, but, you know, we're, we're still trying. Anything else, Mr. Krupkin, I'm sorry.
No, ma'am, I think we've talked about it a couple of times. We, we are not meeting again until March nineteenth, so twenty-eight days, four weeks, before we meet again. Thank, thank the board, allow us to bring all these extra items tonight to get them finished, so there's not pressure to have a special meeting between now and, and the nineteenth of March. And apologize not getting, I have all that information that the board needed right here. I don't know why, but I thought I'd sent it out, but I guess I didn't, so I will have it to the board. So you'll get to see the whole plan for the, the tobacco warehouse and the financial plan that the, the. So you'll get to see the whole plan for the, the tobacco warehouse and the financial plan that the, the developer has in place. To try to get this done and you'll see a sketch that he's done on the inside of the building. And if he could pull that, could pull, any developer could pull off what is in this plan, it would be quite a boom to the downtown.
Absolutely.
Wicker Street, it's right into the Greenway project that the, that the city is bringing down Wicker, so.
There's even, you know, we, we've even talked, the mayor and I have, about talking to the developer. That this particular project has forty-one apartment units, is perhaps doing something for the teachers.
And he can get funding through the state employees credit union for the teachers.
Especially with the proximity to the new school. So affordable housing, something we talk about all the time, so that might be a possibility there.
Wicker Street is also, I think, scheduled to go to Roundabout.
Yes, down there at the Kangaroo. I, I don't like to talk about roundabouts because I'm not really a fan of roundabouts.
Your community development director's smiling over there. They answered your question.
Yes, yes. Yes, I watched a poor soul get caught in the roundabout in Moore County earlier today. It's, yeah, I, whatever. It's okay. I know trucks don't like them, that's for sure. Yeah, 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 definitely, that's one.
Actually, that's a traffic circle.
That's true. Yes. Okay, all right, now Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Dodson.
Um, just want to thank everybody for coming, it shows that you care. And also, just a reminder, which I love, don't need to remind you, is to be, the, the families of Dixons in Florida in your prayers.
Thank you.
Stand there.
That was good, I mean, that makes one of the sounds, it was well done.
Yep.
That was a great prayer too.
Yeah, thank you.
That was a great prayer, it was. Thank you. I just want to mention something that happened this past Friday. A little fire got out of control at my mom's house and just want to give a shout out to Caroline Trace Fire Department at Lemon Springs. They were, they got there in the nick of time, some structures would have been. And I was fighting fire, I know what a fire, I know what it feels like now and pulling hose and running around and all that. And I was laid out on the ground, they asked me if I need oxygen. So I kind of know what it's all about, but just a shout out, huh? Oh yeah, yeah, well, this was a brush fire, we're not getting into the details. It was a brush fire, but anyway, everybody was fine and I just want to give a shout out to the, those guys earned their money, sure did. Said what?
Sounds like we got a session.
Commissioner Odom. Commissioner Song?
So I can't believe Doc's not going to say anything about trash. But that being said, um, I had a, an individual contact me and. Make a recommendation that we consider. A countywide trash pickup day. Because they travel all over Broadway and Lee County and it's not just one place. They said they were appalled, since people have started talking about it, they've started noticing it. And they're right, trash, it is everywhere. It's not just in the, I mean, it's worse in some places and I agree with Doc. I don't know if we're making it worse by talking about it and people are noticing. Throwing it out more, but, but it's there and, so just, you know, we got to figure out a way to deal with it. It's embarrassing to me, I'll be honest.
Well.
Since Commissioner's long wrote it up, I, I do want to say this, I left my house Sunday going to church and I pulled out to Steel Bridge Road. And I looked to my left and there was a lady with a plastic bag picking up trash. And I was running late, but I made a point to stop and roll my window down and I said, thank you very much. But that was, I thought that was something, you know, look out there and see somebody, a lady on Sunday morning with a trash bag picking up trash on the highway. So, you know, I wish we had a whole lot of other people that were concerned about the trash.
Along those lines, I'm, I'm checking because I couldn't remember the exact date, I think it changes from year to year. But, um, or, or the data. Sunday, April the twenty-second is Earth Day. So maybe we could consider doing a resolution and maybe contacting scout troops and civic groups and that kind of thing for that Saturday, the twenty-first. I know we do cleanups on the Saturday around Earth Day at Sand Lee Park. And I know they, at, around, at Deep River, maybe up in Cumnak in that area, I've known them to do some cleanup there before. And a couple of other places, but, you know, yeah, I mean, are y'all, that sound like a good plan to talk to some of those groups and see if we can do that? Okay, we can work on that, it's a good idea.
And I also wanted to mention, you know, the adopt the highway program. I know that there are family members that have adopted their stretch of road where I live in memory of a, a lost loved one, you know. And put that back out there, that, um, you know, that program is still active, if I'm not mistaken, and, and please consider it.
Yep.
And just remind the citizens that, you know, there are options to help.
Okay. Thanks, that's a great idea. Commissioner Reeves?
One quick question, if, if you pay attention to the amount of traffic coming through Lee County now.
Mm-hmm.
It's amazing.
Why are you mentioning, what we're talking about, I, I was going to ask, does anyone understand now that, that, you know, the dead deer on the shoulder of the road, the DOT will still pick those up if you call them. I, I didn't know if they were still doing it or not and I came by, woman was laying on the shoulder of the road and I picked them up, phone hit maintenance department. And I'm going to tell you, within two hours, they were there and had it picked up.
Yeah, if you looked in your packet, probably saw that little map, which I think is a very good thing. I made some notes on several things I'd like to see it include because I like what he's done here. I think Oliver got one. Yeah, I'll give it to our clerk and ask her to have him consider. You know, for example, this is primarily city, but it could break out the four districts.
It's good.
In the county. And have that. And you got commercial properties on here.
Even, even communities too.
Sure.
You know, Cumnak, Lemon Springs.
But listing those are commercial projects over on the side is another good thing for us in terms of economic development. But I'll, I'll give it to the clerk. I've already addressed one concern, but I hope you'll take it to Washington DC and wherever else state level you need to go. Local governments are losing, on the losing end of all these changes that seem to be being made as it relates to revenue from federal and state. And the average person is probably not paying any attention, but at some point in time, you're going to find yourself bearing that load.
That expense.
That's right. Or suffer the consequences if not have services that you've been provided.
Right.
But just, uh. This is one person who does not appreciate the way local government's being treated. The other thing very quickly is if anybody had a chance to watch Face the Nation, to see those five young people speak from Florida. I don't know that I've heard any adults address a concern as well as those five kids did. That was just amazing. I ran it back, I think you ran it back, I ran it back and.
I recorded it, yes.
Looked at it three times just to listen to it, look at the expression on their faces and understand how sensitive. It must have been for them to be witnesses to their frame. So it's a very serious matter. It's one that this country is going to have to deal with very soon. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and just wrapping it up, again, um. The manager and our governmental, community governmental relations manager, Ms. Brown. Uh, will be headed up to Washington in a couple of weeks. So please, you know, kind of, uh, as, as you watch the news and, and radio, internet, whatever. Uh, and, and, in your emails, as you read things that we get on a daily basis on lots of different issues. Um, if they're federal issues and you want to weigh in on them, please, you know, contact me or, or the manager and let us know. You know, our state association and the national association do a really good job of, um. You know, kind of, kind of putting together a group of issues. Like Commissioner Reeves says, you know, we, we are just inundated with unfunded mandates now. Election equipment, you know. And that's one of the things that in, in my discussions, you know, with the superintendent, uh, with, with friends that, um. Serve in mental health agencies, different capacities, um, you know. It's more likely than not that some of the expenses of addressing these issues to help prevent problem or tragedies that happened last Wednesday. Will fall on our shoulders. And, and that's unacceptable, you know, we, we need help from the state and the federal government. In, in dealing with these monumental tasks. But, but I think, you know, mental health is certainly going to be a, a big component to that. So Kevin, especially, you know, you and Andre with you being on the health board, you know, and, and your, um. Professional lives, Cameron, you too, you know, um, things that you can weigh in on. Tim, you've got first responder experience. You know, just any, anything that you want to share that we could take up there that would help in the discussion would be appreciated. As with any issue, you know, that you guys come across, we'll be happy to share it when we get out there. Okay, so.
One quick thing I'll ask the director here.
Yes, sir.
As it relates to the proposed change in the food stamp. As your organization, statewide organization taking a position on the sending out the boxes of food?
Uh, not this time.
All right.
It'll be interesting, usually we meet once a month, so to see where those conversations lead.
Thank you, keep up.
I will.
Okay, all right, um. Yes, sir. Okay, um, any questions on the motion? All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed, okay, we're in closed session, thank you.